Okay. Yeah, it's not good, it's not good.
Like the screen on?
Yeah, I, yeah, there's.
Sit down there.
That's why I can't remember from public office. Point thing's not gonna work.
You're overly critical of your own, your own image is that way?
That's right.
I like that that's your reason why you can't. Eventually when they put me on.
All right, we are ready.
Looks like we're finally here, it's uh six oh one now, and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council Work Session to order on Thursday, May twelfth. We actually do have one change to the agenda, we're gonna add an update about the um food truck court at the Lacey Depot. Um so quick ten minute briefing, I know that some members of this council have had, but not everyone, so we're gonna add that after we uh discuss the the Washington Center requests, so with that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in the deserving discussion. Seeing none on the fair of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there? Then that motion now as it carries, good to see everyone, I've been at City Hall a couple times this afternoon, and so when I saw we had such a light agenda, like I think I can handle this one from, from Zoom, so, but I will turn it over to the Washington Center um and take it away.
All right, well, thank you so much for inviting us, I'm really excited to be here in person and hello out there, I do, I'm going to now awkwardly try and shoot to our um PowerPoint presentation, so I'll share screen. And hopefully I can do this successfully, and there's two of them. Okay, just one moment.
This is a test.
I know. Slide show. Let's see. Beginning, okay, I think we made it, all right. All right, thank you, uh I'm Jill Barnes, I'm the, I'm, I might be focusing more now to the persons in the room, um, cause it feels like theater in the round. Uh and I haven't rehearsed this too much, so I'm Jill Barnes, I'm the Executive Director of the Washington Center, and I'm joined with Alex Bun, he's our, well, he's a former Board Chair and long-term Board Member, but currently the Co-Chair of our Capital Campaign Committee. And Jocelyn Wood, our Development Director, is also in the room, and Spence Waggan, also a Board Member and um Capital Campaign Committee Member is in the room as well, so thank you for inviting us.
Yeah, we wanna, I will also wanna thank you for seeing us again, I think we were back here a couple years ago, two years ago. If uh you remember that, it's been a wild two years for everybody, I know for, for you all and for the Washington Center, it was very um transformational two years down at the center, we had um actually fourteen months over four hundred days where there was not a performance on the stage, and it just absolutely gutted the revenue. I think we're, there's a year in there with ninety percent loss of revenue, um, I'm not sure which year that was, but in the last, you know, eighteen months. And um it was, it was a dicey times, uh definitely for all performing centers of sports and everything else. And so I gotta hand it to Jill and her team that really like made the tough decisions and tried to, and navigated that um to where we're back to having full season. Uh we uh financially were able to like get through that, um it, it was very, very difficult time, but they have a really wonderful staff in there, it's always great to partner with them, and so we're um grateful to be here, um appreciate what you do, and how you contribute to the community, and how you're so dedicated to the community. We feel like we're an important part of the community, and we wanna share with you what we've been up to for the last couple of years with our capital campaign and improving the center. And um I'm gonna hand it over to Jill, she's gonna give you uh more information about that, and we'll be here for, oh, that's my wife there, we're the co-chairs of the, would I forget? Okay, yes, yes, so let me go a little further, we're raising eight point six million dollars um for the center, this is all work that's going on the inside, and Jill's gonna go over the details of that. It's a pretty big ticket price there, we've raised ninety-five percent of that with um a lot of different types of sources, uh individuals, brands, um businesses, um cities. And we are um here to share with you all that information and, and tell you how we were able to do that, and how we're gearing up to get it across the finish line, so um, thank you.
Thanks, so we just wanna remind you all, who is the Washington Center and what do we do? We were founded in nineteen eighty-five um as the Washington Center, of course, we're a historic theater site, but that's been around since nineteen twenty-four, but the Washington Center has existed since nineteen eighty-five. Um we're a regional performing arts center, we serve uh all the communities here, and we bring artists on stage from all the communities here, as well as from around the world. And we believe that the arts are an important part of our economy, of our quality of life, and it really helps us to, what, what happens there helps us to interpret the world around us, and to be entertained, and have our lives enriched, our mission is to inspire artists and audiences of all ages through live performances, enriching the vibrancy of our community. We have eighteen local artistic partners, many of you may have seen them before or been involved with them, the Olympia Symphony Orchestra, Masterworks Coral Ensemble, Debbie's Dance, Ballet Northwest, Timberland Regional Library, just to name a few, they're artistic partners, and um the performance-based ones, we're their home. And um a really big benefit to them is they receive priority scheduling before we drop in any of our national tours, and that's something a lot of people don't know, so when we have a Broadway show on a Monday night, that might be why, or a rock band on a Tuesday, that's why, um, cause our artistic partners um are very active, they have amazing seasons that they put together, and they take a lot of the weekends, so um we're really excited to be able to work together in that capacity. We provide substantial subsidies and rent, rental rates for artistic partners, and in a, no, our last full season, full season when people were operating as normal, and the subsidy was almost fifty-seven thousand dollars in rental um rate um subsidies. Right. Um, we're really active with our youth as well, um, we have a pretty comprehensive arts education program, and um Olympia Junior Programs, which is one of our artistic partners, is probably the most famous of them, um, they serve K, uh mostly uh first through fifth grade um students, and in a, a normal year. They, they serve just, they serve every student in North Hurston School District in that age range, one through five, and most of them get to come see two shows. Um, we've served all of the schools in the district and beyond, and they'll serve up to twenty-four thousand students in a year, which is really amazing, and honestly, we love the yellow school buses pulled up out front of the center. And what is our impact with Lacey residents, well, we're only as good as our data, but we do have a lot of good data, so when people purchase tickets, we do track their zip codes, and we're able to track as much as we can. And um in the most recent season that we completed, we had over seven thousand patrons with Lacey-specific zip codes, and that represents about sixteen percent of all Thurston County tickets that we sold. Also, uh we have over three hundred active volunteers, and as a lot of nonprofit organizations, and especially ours, we couldn't operate without our volunteers, and about ten percent of them live here in Lacey. Okay. Okay. Uh, we did do a survey with our artistic partners to ask how many of the people they serve live in Lacey, okay, so let's take Ballet Northwest, for example, there's Dance Studio is in downtown Olympia, but they serve dancers, they have hundreds of dancers, same with Studio West Dance Academy, they have hundreds of families that they work with, and we estimate that eight, about eighteen percent of our artistic partner members that we serve also live in Lacey. Um, and this is another interesting statistic that we've been able to pull, so we've had about ten thousand, every year, there's about ten thousand opportunities for local people to be on stage, whether it's from the ballets or student orchestras of Greater Olympia or the symphony, and about um ten percent of them come from from, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, eighteen percent come from Lacey, so we've had about eighteen hundred Lacey residents on stage in the last year at the Washington Center. Have any of you been on the stage to perform there?
Not yet.
Not yet, yeah? With who?
Capital Christian Center.
Oh, excellent. It's a fun place. All right. Um, great, so we um have been talking about the values, you know, that the arts bring to our region as far as entertainment and enrichment, it does help support the economy. Um, and we've been talking outwardly like this is what we do, but we also really need Lacey residents for our success as well, and um we're in, we're integrally tied together. And it, it does improve the equality of life for everybody, and of course, we have a uh photo panorama here, we have a great relationship with them as well, they send buses to almost every one of our events. We're so glad they're sending buses again, cause they did take a pause on that as well, so uh we complement what's going on in the schools and what's happening out there at campus as well and beyond. So, uh I don't, probably many of you remember, um up until twenty fourteen, um nineteen eighty-five to twenty fourteen, our exterior looks like that, we have this beautiful exterior upgraded now today, and we have really um over the many years been good stewards of everything that's happening on the outside and the inside. But time and technology changes and wear and tear, it was, it was really time for us to look inside and do some upgrades, and um also to update and match the beautiful exterior that we have, so I wanna tell you about what's been going, what have we done? We completed all of our backstage projects, and I couldn't be happier about this, it's a really big deal in so many ways. We wanted first to focus on everything that makes a performance a performance, right? And how the audience feels when they come into the space, a lot of the project, I'll mention just a few of them, but maybe people don't know, they don't know what's going on backstage, but that's part of the magic, they just know how they feel when they're in the space, but we finished all of our backstage projects, which included replacing all of our rigging, so if you see in a theater, they have all those lines that hold curtains and set pieces and orchestra shell pieces and lights, we've replaced all of that. We also upgraded our entire audio system, and when you go into the theater now, you'll see these linery speakers, um, that's what they call the speakers when they, you know, ch ch ch, you see them curved, and the cool thing about that is it pushes the sound out to every seat in the house, so you can see there's a full spectrum of sound that people are getting, instead of some seats are better than others for audio, so now every seat is great for audio. And we're um, our last project that we, big project we completed was to upgrade and replace our lighting system. And as you can imagine, there's been a lot of technology changes in lighting since nineteen eighty-five, and we had all of our old canisters. It is now more energy efficient, it's more labor efficient, and um I think the best part of the lighting upgrade, which was um a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar project, is that the, it all of the, the equipment is available for artistic partners, but now it's really, what are the dreams that anyone who's creating, any of our local producers are creating on stage? And they can make it happen, cause we have the capacity to do it, it's been really fun to see what's coming up, and um it's just great to know that we really can put anything on our stage that we want to. Um, and, and our, our local folks can create and dream big. Oh, and one other thing, we were able to um do this upgrade during um the shutdown, which was wonderful, because we were able to employ our tech employees at a time when we couldn't have otherwise the lighting upgrade, we would have had to close the facility anyway to do it, to take everything out, put new work, or new lighting fixtures in, and um also give our crew some time to train on the new equipment, so I'm really glad we were able to do that at that time. Okay, so we talked everything back house, and now we don't have to just talk about the carpet at the Washington Center, but it's time to upgrade the front of house. The front of house, when we talk about that, it refers to all the public spaces, so the lobby and in the theater, that's not the stage. Um, here is a rendering of our new lobby and what it will look like, and um we had a competitive process with a design firm, and we have a design committee, and we selected B C R A out of Tacoma, they've worked with other performing arts centers, and we've been really excited um to work with them. You know, we kinda gave them input about what we want and what we're looking for, and not just matching the exterior, but some of the aesthetics we wanted were to be warm and welcoming and inviting creativity, delight, wonder, inspiration, and um we're making some pretty significant changes, um enhanced lighting, and let's see, I've got another rendering over here, um this is where we normally have that big long concession bar, so we're flipping that, opening up this space a little bit more, more mobile bars, um so we can serve our patrons better, better signage, and that was something really important to us, cause um I'm really proud about this too, we have been um, you know, testing the waters with new genres and new types of shows, and we track how many people are first-time attendees. And I would say the first few years I was here, we would average around, it could be like four to fourteen percent were first-time attendees, well, we regularly have shows now where we're bringing in maybe twenty-two percent. We had, well, we had Wilco this fall, and I think we were like, do, do you remember, it was like sixty or seventy percent?
We just had a show that had like forty-eight percent.
First-time attendees, so of course we want them to keep coming back, but it's really important that when they come into the theater, they feel welcome, and they know where they're going, cause you know, walking into new spaces, you cannot, it's just important. Uh, so we're very excited about all of that, um I'd love to tell you more about the materials, and I can answer that later, but I'll just keep going for now. And, oh, and I'll let you know, the work that we're planning to do is starting the end of June through October. And we are extremely grateful for the variety of support we've received, including the municipal support. And the City of Olympia has committed three point nine million towards this eight point six million dollar project, that's a big dollar amount, and I wanna explain it a little bit. Um, the City of Olympia, of course, we have this public-private partnership with them, right, it's their building, and that, that investment includes um uh, we have to do significant elevator work, um a new HVAC system, which thank goodness, we were able to get that done before the pandemic, so once we were able to reopen, we had the proper air filtration system that um that is very necessary, um a new uh boiler generator, really like building, building things, okay? And including resurfacing the concrete um floor on where the theater seats are, so the, the structural things that make it a building, the City of Olympia has, is investing three point nine million in those aspects, all the things that make it a theater theater, the nonprofit, the Washington Center is fundraising for, and that's why we're here. We did go to City of Tombwater as well, they've committed a hundred thousand dollars over the course of several years, and um we're very grateful for that, and we're here to make a request with City of Lacey as well, um to play your part in the reinvestment in the facility. And it's been um we've been very fortunate that every dollar invested, we've been able to get matched up to thirty-three percent, that's through a program through the State Department of Commerce, they're building for the Arts Fund. We applied for two grants over the course of four years, and that was um really beneficial for us. Also, um the support for this, these facility, the facility upgrades and these theatrical upgrades, it doesn't just benefit Olympia residents or the touring shows, it really benefits every single person that uses the Washington Center, and the larger community, including the artists, the patrons, the families. And we would like to, um, we'd love to ask for two hundred fifty thousand from the City of Lacey, we're so close to getting over the finish line, we have under five hundred thousand left to raise, and you guys could really be a hero and help us just cross that finish line, we're ready to get this work done this summer, and we would love your support. And I would love to, I have a thank you slide, and I'd love to answer some questions, but I'm gonna turn the screen share off, so everyone can see us a little bit better. And I'd love to answer some questions.
Sure.
Let's start share at the top, the red button at the top.
Thank you.
Great, so thank you, um thank you for this presentation. For several of us, we've seen this presentation, and we, we received this ask, and we were on our way to trying to um give you the money, and then of course COVID happened, and we've been shut down for quite a long time, and so um we've been waiting for you guys to come back and, and give it, give the ask. Uh again, uh I guess the big question is, is, is there, is there a timeframe on, on this money? Do you need that two fifty all by like this summer, or could you get half of it this year and half of it next year?
Yeah, that's a good question, um thank you for asking, and definitely we could do it over time, if that's, if that can help us, that we can do that, thank you.
So I, I think it'll be uh our recommendation, and I've had a conversation with Scott about this, is that um we have enough within our LTAC funds to be able to satisfy this um request, and so I think our request back to you, and that the council needs to agree, and this is, it's a little weird, because we can't direct the LTAC to give you this funds, but what we can do is have you request these funds from the LTAC over a two-year period, and the Chair of the LTAC is sitting right there in, in front of you, our Deputy Mayor, who's here, hear this, and he could also uh express to the rest of the LTAC that um the council um is recommending this course of action, and if for some reason LTAC doesn't go through that, then we can come back to this council and figure out some other way, but I think that's gonna be our recommendation, would, would that be okay with, with the Washington Center, if you made that request to LTAC?
Uh, well, we, we can definitely do that, I would love to talk a little bit more about LTAC and funding and how um
Please do.
City of Lacey can uh make however it works for you financially, I understand that, so lodging taxes, we do apply annually um during the competitive um grant process for operational funds, and those are very important for us, and I failed to mention at the top of this meeting, thank you so much for continuing your support during the pandemic years, cause I know that you pulled back, um, I just can't say thank you enough, I uh, I just appreciate the consistency, and it was something we could count on, so thank you very much during that time, we do use it, it's very important for us for operational funds. I, are you thinking that LTAC reserves?
Yes, so we'd use LTAC reserves, this will be the request to the LTAC Committee, is to use LTAC reserves to cover this over a two-year period, not counting your normal ask, and so we, we'd use reserves, we'd ask the LTAC Committee to consider using reserves to cover this ask for the next two years.
Okay, I, and I don't know what your reserves are like, so thank you for the suggestion, and if that's the appropriate way, that's fine with me.
Can I also have any question about that approach, I guess the question would be that we take it out of a general fund of reserves, or we use LTAC, which LTAC would be an appropriate funding source for this, given the nature of the Washington Center. You know, talking with Troy, there are reserves that would actually potentially meet this request, but again, would have to go through the formal request, I think there's an understanding that there's been an ongoing operating request, which I think we're trying to separate those two, and there'd be a separate, separate capital request relevant to what the presentation was.
Why would we stretch it out for two years?
You know, LTAC can probably have that discussion, I think we just need to make sure that current revenues are meeting um our current operating expenses, and if there's sufficient reserves, that can be discussed amongst the LTAC Committee. I have a report coming from Troy soon.
Anyone else have?
Take action from this council, then, cause it would be LTAC, which is separate. They vote separately, we don't have any vote on that, other than once LTAC does it, to approve or not approve, with LTAC, correct?
True, I guess I would look at this as direction, so you, you had a direct request from the Washington Center, if it's, if it's the wish of council, if you think the best route to ask for funds would be through LTAC, then you'd say, we direct you to go through the LTAC approval process, that will go through the budget, you'll get the recommendation from LTAC as part of the twenty twenty-three budget process, and there'd be a decision, you know, by December. And the request is still September thirtieth.
And we, we could do that request sooner, can, LTAC Committee can meet sooner than that for a special meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, we're, I was trying to put together a meeting for LTAC just before this meeting, at least push out some information about where we are, where we sit financially, uh and the projects that have been funded um from last year's, year's budget, which.
You know, and to tell you the truth, I, I'd appreciate if LTAC would do that, you're the Chair, so it's your call, but I appreciate if LTAC would, would call a meeting and go over this request, and so cause if the LTAC doesn't wanna go this way, we need to know, so we can make another we need to make another decision, cause we can't, we can't direct LTAC, but you need to go and present this, and then if, for some reason LTAC says no, then we need to be able to take it, take it back to us, and then we'll have to make another decision on how we, how we fund this.
We're, gotta, uh, the schedule is, I think it was June second was, was gonna be our next meeting, if I can push that up a week, would that help, or?
Well, let me, let me throw one other caveat into it, I mean, just for consistency process, we should have, if we're good, if LTAC is amenable to accepting an application, we should do it through the normal process that we have, to so we're being consistent with all the nonprofits that typically ask for LTAC dollars, and ultimately it's LTAC's decision, but if we're gonna advertise the fact that there is available money, it should go through at least a, an open process that we typically follow, yeah.
Understand, that's understandable, Scott, I think this is, I think the LTAC Committee can meet, can meet whenever they choose to meet to talk, to talk about this, so it, it's up to the Chair, it's up to the Chair for you to decide what, how you wanna do it, but it'd be nice to have some um some feedback from the LTAC Committee well before budget time, because if the LTAC Committee chose to go to a different direction, then we need to be able to discuss it, so understand what I'm saying, Scott?
Yeah.
Go, Councilmember Bean, say?
Cause I have a question actually for Washington Center, so I, I'm fine with that as far as the process, but before I would, I'm assuming at some point we're gonna vote to make a recommendation to LTAC, so I have some questions for Washington Center, for why be. So last time you were here, my question to you guys, which I didn't hear anything about today, but was about the economic impact of the Washington Center on Lacey, and you guys didn't talk about the, you didn't talk about that at all tonight, you know, with Olympia or Lacey, but I'm wondering if anything was done, any, had any numbers, any ideas on that at all?
Yeah, yes and no, um, and I might need Jocelyn's help on this, we were trying to work with the Thurston Economic Development Council, and I feel like we weren't able to get a breakout on Lacey-specific, so we have a number from, and I think it was from twenty nineteen, perhaps, the economic impact from twenty nineteen on the, you know, just for every dollar spent, it was two two point two point one, okay, two point one, um, but we weren't able to break it out specific for Lacey, and I just, I don't have the, I don't know how to like what resources to make that, figure that out.
What the EDC told us is that there are zip codes that span multiple cities, and so they were unable to break it out for us, because they could look at it as countywide, but they couldn't get into specific cities, so um that was, it was, it was like a roadblock that we were coming up against.
We did try.
If they can't get to the data, they can't get to the data. Okay.
Anything else?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Stedman here, hey, um, I would suggest that we pledge at least a hundred and fifty thousand regardless of what the LTAC does, just to give reassurance to the Washington Center, a great partner of ours, a great um, you know, attraction, a, a, you know, a destination for people outside our county with spending their disposable income here locally, um and just, you know, a little stress release for them, and that we value them and, and what they bring to the table for the county, so that would be my suggestion.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, and, and that's why I was hoping that LTAC Committee Well, I, I, I appreciate that. And, and that's why I was hoping that LTAC Committee can meet sooner or later and, and give some direction because if for some reason LTAC is choosing to go in a different direction, then I want it for us to know as soon as possible so we can look at other sources and, and make sure we can make a request.
Yeah, perfect. Because they deserve to know, you know, without it hanging around.
I, I agree. And I, and, and hopefully we can get that information to them as soon as we possibly can. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Just probably a quick one. If LTAC says yes, or they say, yeah, we'll pay for the whole thing out of reserve funds, how quickly can those funds be dispensed? Is there a delay or is it pretty quick?
Go ahead.
I'll let Scott answer that question.
So you write the check.
Well, so here's the process I'm thinking of. I think if you're wanting some application, I think what you're asking LTAC, are they open to the idea of doing a separate capital request specifically for reserves, not outside of the operating request? I think if there's an openness, that's not a guarantee, but at least that would signal that there's an LTAC's desire to accept an application of that nature. Then we'd go through our normal process. By October, that would, LTAC would finish their business, make a recommendation to inform the budget. You do the budget hearings and by November and December, you would know what was in the LTAC budget and then you deliberate that as part of the budget hearing process.
Scott, do you have to do it that way? I mean, if LTAC made a recommend.
That's the normal application process, right? That's the.
And that doesn't give them an answer till the end of the year when we do budget.
True, but I guess I was going off the base of that time. So that was.
We're doing, we are doing the work this summer.
Sure.
And so we're gonna be paying some bills coming up real soon. And we'll just keep fundraising until we have the money available, but we, we would love to have a commitment or a pledge so we know what we're, what we know what's what moving forward, but we have some levers we can pull to spread that out because we have numerous pledges over a few years.
Councilmember Cuckle?
Yeah. So if we're going to use this route and have have the, the theater ask for reserves for LTAC. Is there any potential competition for those reserve funds? Is there any other entity or source or something within the community that would say, you know, we could really use that money too and then have just cause for, for applying for those reserve funds? Could there be a competition to see who gets those funds?
Yeah, that's the, that's the reason I brought it. It'd be nice if we went through our normal process and have everyone have even playing field essentially.
Right.
This would mean later in the year.
Right.
So no guarantee for the Washington Center until the review of applications is completed.
And the budget approval by us, because we, LTAC approves it, but then it comes before this council to approve as part of our budget approval. So it wouldn't, that wouldn't be till December.
Right. Sorry, are you on the call? Is Troy on this call?
So just maybe one other idea. So if council wanted to pledge, in a sense, assuming not knowing what LTAC's going to do, you could make a pledge and if LTAC does come through the money, then you could pull back that pledge, but at some point you're guaranteeing an amount of money that council is comfortable with. That may be another approach. You want to commit, if you want to commit to a number, although you'd like to see if LTAC would actually fund it through their reserves, if they don't, then you have another opportunity to actually fund it through that commitment.
That's the, that's, is Troy on this call? Is Troy here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So that's, that's the question I was gonna say. Can, if, can we, the city of Lacey be reimbursed by LTAC for this?
It wouldn't have to be reimbursed though. We could just, if we, if we make the commitment and LTAC doesn't come through, and we, we take the money from general fund, obviously.
Right. Well, I, I was just wondering if, I mean, if we could give, we could give half of it, you know, by, you know, this summer and the other half by next summer, but then be reimbursed by LTAC, right? Then it gives them certainty. And we go for it, go forward and it's, it's sort of even still out. I'm just wondering if that's a possibility.
And the funds being moved like that?
It seems like a
Well, the.
Yeah.
The burden of proof is whether these funds are used for tourism purposes, either the support of a a facility or actual promotion of tourism. And I suppose we could make that connection, you know, even though it's a reimbursement, if the original funds were spent for tourism purposes.
There he is.
I was just gonna suggest perhaps a pledge from the council, if that's the action the council wants to take, would probably be the more appropriate step. And then determining how those funds are gonna get there would be determined later after review and contemplation and consideration.
Sounds good. And that'll be my recommendation is that let's, uh, let's, let's pledge to the Washington Center that we will, we will do this. And then we'll, we'll go back and see what's the most appropriate way for that to happen. But I, I do want to give some certainty to the Washington Center where, and I think it'd be more appropriate if we could, if the Washington Center could receive these funds, you know, in a timely fashion, you know, Ju- June of this year or, you know, this summer and, you know, a year from this summer. You know, I know you guys are under a times, time constraint and I think it's appropriate to under look at how we can, you know, we're making sure we're crossing the dots and everything. And so we give, we give the finance people some time to do that, but I, I'd like to give that pledge and I'll make that motion that we, that we do that and, you know, and then consult with LTAC on, on, on reimbursement or how would we go forward with that. Clarify. I moved. I heard a second. Robin, you have a question?
Carolyn, Councilmember Cox had had her.
Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Cox.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way this is going because I think we need a cleaner process than was originally contemplated here. So, thanks.
Mayor, could you clarify your, your motion?
So the, my, my motion is that we're pledging these dollars. We're gonna give, we're gonna give LTAC some time to weigh in and, and then we're gonna see on what's the most appropriate way to be, you know, if LTAC can reimburse the city or how, how that works, but we're gonna have to wait, wait and have it go through a little bit of a process here, but in the meantime, we're pledging, pledging the, the dollars to the Washington Center.
So that's a really complicated.
So, so my understanding is that, Mr. Mayor, that your motion is to, is for the city to pledge the requested amount for, for the requested purpose to be considered how those funds are gonna be appropriated to later date. And that requested amount was, I believe, 250,000.
Broken up. And that was the second.
Broken up over two years. And that's, that's the second. And so we're still having that conversation. Councilmember Cuckle, do you have something?
No, the, the attorney clarified.
Does anyone else have any questions about that motion?
Just, it, to me, it's simple. If the LTAC doesn't come through, we do. So.
Yeah.
That's the ten.
Funds swiftly.
Any other, any other discussion? Hey, well, it's been moved and seconded all in fear of that motion signified by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries and we'll go through the process. And thank you, Washington Center, for being so patient. I think we've been working on this for four years. But we, we really appreciate you hanging in there and, and keep up the good work.
Thanks. Thank you.
I think the quick summation is there's a pledge toward the end, figure out the meetings. So that's, that's a good takeaway.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Council. So next up on our agenda is to get an update from Rick about the food truck.
Thank you.
See them putting out the power out there today, Rick.
What's that?
I can see them. Hey.
Well, and, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to do email out in advance, but I just passed out a, a site plan and I'll email the rest of the council after the meeting that completed that site plan. But yes, thank you. Wanted to come out tonight and just do a very quick and brief update of where we are on the food truck plaza. As we're coming back, you know, I think, I think we're coming into spring with May's coming in with the weather, but we've got some exciting activities going in spring and the summer. So this is kind of a recap to orientate you to the site plan. So I was also take this moment too, just to, to, you know, come in and compliment all the various city staff that put effort in. This, this is a project that's, you know, multiple departments have come together to work towards. So we've, you know, working with the Parks Department, with Public Works Construction Management, Public Workshops and Maintenance Facilities, Public Affairs and, and everybody has come together to kind of pull all the good pieces to bring this project to, to reality. So as it sits today, the, the site, based on the plans for the museum, the old 5700 has been demolished. The site's been cleared and prepped with gravel. And with that opportunity, we were able to put a little bit more formality to an informal setup for our food truck program. And so on this site plan, it kind of shows what we're, you guys can see six red rectangular boxes on the west side of the, those are gonna be designated food truck parking locations. Just to the left of those on the site plan will be some formal parking area. And if you remember last summer, we had the food truck kind of parking on the perimeter and people just kind of parked wherever into the gravel area. Well, now we're gonna have a little bit more designated and formal parking, so controlling where vehicles are versus pedestrians and the food truck traffic. And then as you move over towards the depot, depot, we'll also have a, a space for a stage that we, for a special event, we'll rent and bring and set up. Then also we'll have some tables and picnic tables over there by the depot and the playground, as well as we'll be installing some sail cloths to create some sun shade and on and and cover for, for inclement weather as well. We also will be putting in lights and we also installed two power location sources on either side of the, the food trucks. One probably more focused for use of by the food trucks, the other one towards the depot that can be used by the food trucks that are in proximity, but also if we do have any type of entertainment with the stage, we can plug in and have some power there as well. So all this is starting to come together. We are getting ready to, uh, working with Parks and their May 25th planned grand opening, official grand opening of the depot and the playground. We are looking at bringing in our first set of trucks of the year for that event on May 25th. Then we'll let the trucks that will want to stay there, continue to stay there from May 25th on. And then we're gonna plan a more formal food truck launch or official launch sometime in June. Where we are on some of those things, like I said, we, you'll, if you go drive by the site, you'll see that it is completely prepped. We'll have markers, signs, identifying space numbers for the food trucks, vendor locations. We'll also be installing the tables and chairs. Once the Fun Fair Festival is over on the, I think it's 23rd, then we'll install the tables, just to, you know, use them for that event and then we'll set up the formality at the food truck site. As, uh, you know, kind of like with everything nowadays, we start hearing about logistical problems. We won't have the sunset shades set up until late June because they'll, they're still on order, but they should be here in the middle of June and for installation in late June. And with that, we'll also put up some lighting around that. So overhead lighting, so it kind of creates in the evening hours a little bit more festive nature and ambiance. So as we move forward, we've been also working, Wesley's done a great job of, of supporting some of this work as well as reaching out to our food truck vendors. And as we're getting ready to move forward, we have three food truck vendors that are willing to be basically there every day of the week, when parked vehicles there overnight. So we'll have a little permit setting, so we'll anchor vendors and those include trucks such as Lava Bowls, Tacos California and Boba Listic. And so those will be setting up as a permit basis. So we'll have three additional slots for food trucks to come in on a rotational basis. And if we get some more momentum, I can see those turning into permanent locations as well. So that's an exciting thing as well. We have on the rotating trucks, we have other, five other vehicles that would, are willing to be there and commit to be in there on a rotational basis. Another nice thing about this in terms of coordination, that coordinating that space is, and last year we're working on a counter, trying to coordinate with the various vendors. One of the lead trucks is gonna be setting up a internal Facebook page of the food trucks to coordinate who comes and goes. So people know the schedules and they can commit to certain locations. So they're gonna start self-organizing that activity as well. So that's another positive, I think, in, in, in the food trucks starting to get invested in the site as well. Will they be, since you're putting in lighting and stuff, do you expect them to be open then in the evening instead of just at lunchtime? Yeah, we're expecting them to be open for lunch hour all the way through the dinner hour. And we're trying to get to expanded, more permit activity and, and as a a more stable source as well. One of the key things is in the past, we had, you know, food trucks that were there before would prep a home and have a certain amount of food. We're hoping that we'll be able to, be able to continue to prep food there at, at the location. So they're not running out of food as well.
Barbecue place, always had that problem.
Yeah.
How many trucks were there previously before we did the teardown?
We had a, probably I would say, not enough. We had probably two or three stable until we started getting a lot of logistic problems. Some of them started to get supplies in. But we had probably two or three frequent ones and then really Y50 and Lava Bowls became a consistent all throughout the year, but all until we probably had around nine or 10 different vendors that had come through and set up at the site from one period to another. There were serious logistics problems. They were out of food almost every day by 1:00, 1:30. I mean, you'd go there when it was lunchtime, they'd already be out of food.
And so it was, it was that good. I mean, that, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Patrons, it was, it was that well received.
The first several weeks, some of our food trucks would run out of food within 30 minutes to 45 minutes. And others would have a much larger supply. But again, that's part of our process and we're testing the market, trying to figure out is this something that's worked? Is something we will receive and we think it will? Also with the space here, we're able to partner with and coordinate with Parks on any special events that they do at the depot and the playground to also, you know, make a call and bring in additional trucks and also have entertainment. So this is starting to really become more of a kind of a civic space and a place that hopefully this summer people will look to, to go to, to spend some time and hang out and be part of their community. Is, is there room there? So if we were doing a bigger event, you see these a lot in Florida. They would have events and they would have dozens of food trucks. How many, I mean, realistically, I mean, there's obviously plenty of room there for more than six, right? If it was, I don't mean on a regular basis, but for an event. We, we would do that. We could be able, would be able to do that, but we also would have to plan logistics of parking and other people showing up and how we would work that, but there is that possibility.
We have the parking lot across the street also. It's not huge, but like you could use more of the regular parking lot for food trucks and then have folks park across the street.
Correct. And then also too, there would be, if you had real large events, we could even look and, and talk to St. Martin's about potential, you know, of satellite parking and those types of, there's options we would do if we had that event. So that's something that is definitely a, a good, a good point and something that could be accommodated. Just throw it out there because there was this place in Hollywood, Florida called Hollywood Circle, but they did it every, one Saturday a month, they did a food truck rally. And they would have, I don't know, 30, 40 food trucks and, I mean, people just, and they'd have a stage, so they had entertainment and people came out by the thousand. It was huge, huge events.
We have the Legislative Food Truck Day, like in Olympia, once a year where dozens of food trucks come to the hill.
And we've been in contact with the Washington Food Truck Association and so we would hopefully be able to reach out to them as well for that event. And the, the other piece, I just want to also know, we talked about having a gray water dump there on site.
Yes, that's the big, that's the big one.
And that is one thing that is still being planned, but we're looking at, you know, physically, logistically, how do, how do we do that so that we're not doing a throwaway work? So there is, we are working on planning and the sewer lateral for the gray water dump, but we're looking at doing it deliberately so that we would be able to put a lateral in that would actually serve the future museum. And then put in a port along that lateral to be able to be the gray water dump for the food trucks. And so that work is still continuing and probably would not be until late summer before we actually get it installed because we have to do some additional work with sewer lines. And I'm saying that late summer, it could be sooner, but that is something that we just have to work, work out logistically. And, and again, it's something you're looking at in context of the. And um, and again, something you're looking at in context of the, the long-term master plan for the site. The other piece I want to highlight, especially talking about events, is we've been, um, Wesley's been working with um, uh, Bernicia Johns. And she is getting ready to set up um, the Thursday night markets here in Lacey, and they're gonna be uh, sitting around Hunterford Park. And she is looking to bring in up to fifty vendors and create the, this public market activity, pop-up market. It's gonna be once a month on Thursday nights at Hunterford Park, and actually their first event's gonna be next Thursday. And I think there might be people having some free time next Thursday night, they can go check it out, but that's just a rumor. But with that conversation with them, they're also, she's also looking at being able to do a uh, Sunday market over at the depot site. And so we have some room where the future museum or the old warehouse building used to be, that could be utilized for that market, pop-up market. And there's another way we can bring in other events, bring in music, because with part of her event, she brings in some entertainment and music as well. And you start maybe getting some synergy around that site and the food trucks, and getting people to identify the depot as that civic place in Lacey. And then with that, one of the things that uh, Parks is working on and will be working, collaborating on it with them, is putting up a sign kiosk. To talk about the future vision for the site, help promote, you know, this is gonna be the future museum site, but with that. Also have a storyboard of the depot district subarea visioning that we did back in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, the council adopted. Looking at the vision of that whole area and future steps for implementation. So again, if we got a chance to do a lot of different things on the site, we're pretty excited about it. Uh, so again, in recap, we'll have our first event, uh, May twenty-fifth with the Parks grand opening. We'll have food trucks there. Those trucks will stay, and we will be looking at a more uh, formal launch of the food truck and announcement tied. Probably if we're able to get finalized a commitment with the pop-up market, Love's Market, probably coincide with that uh, that first market event. To try to do a really big push about launching the official food truck site.
Cool. How does the gray water thing work in from June to?
Well, that's where we have to work with the, the food truck vendors and um, um. Talk and communicate with them and how that works, because really it's gonna be, we'll have to figure out how to accommodate that, or if they, you know, they're traditionally need to go someplace to a dump. Station, yeah. And there, there are dump stations at uh, like, I know downtown, uh, at the lot treatment plant, they have a, a dump station that people can go and. And dump their gray water. But that's something that logistically, we want to try to minimize uh, as much uh, of a burden for the food trucks as possible, but.
I don't think it's gonna be that much of an issue for them to, I mean, they did it all last summer, right?
But it's still a pain.
It is, especially when they leave overnight and.
I mean, can't we use the, the drop that we have just on the corner with, uh, next to the Perfect Cup Coffee?
Well, that is a, a, a whole different um, um, setup, and that's, that setup is geared for our uh, step tank trucks. And so I would probably say no, but we can check into that and find out for sure.
I mean, it's right there. It's taking the same type of water. I mean, you'd, you'd think there'd be some connection there.
But we will, we will, we will look at that as an interim option and find out if we can, but again, it's, I know that, that. That's, that location or or that is set up to be catered to our step trunks, which may have different equipment, those type of things, and also. Moving in and around there, that might be a little bit difficult as well. I'll, I'll look at that and confirm, and and uh, we will still look at trying to figure out what the best option we can. Do to accommodate those trucks.
You want to have any questions?
On my calendar.
Can't, can't wait. Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda. This uh. This is my last meeting. Deputy Mary, take over, don't screw anything up. With that, I'll call this meeting adjourned. I'll see you back when I get back from Poland, everyone.
Hi, Andy.
Bye. I will.
Bye, everyone.